All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 11th at 5:30 PM. Mr. Anke, could we have a roll call place?
Commissioner Chappell.
Present.
Commissioner French. Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Spinato.
Present.
Chairman Ogden, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no public comments at this time. Could we take a look in the approval minutes from April 13th? Take a look at that. We were all at that meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve. Could we have a call in then, Mr. Anke?
Commissioner Chappell.
Yes.
French.
Approved.
Ogden.
Approved.
Spinato.
Approved.
The minutes from the April 13th meeting are approved as written.
Thank you. Our items four, five, and six are kind of all lumped together. They were separated, but they were technically meant to be for our city manager and possibly a new city planner and our city council. And that was the reason for our workshop. We were going to kind of toss around a few things that needed a little addressing. I've asked and asked, talking with you all individually, to maybe come up with some of your thoughts, what we need to do. I have prepared a list myself. I'd be happy to start unless somebody else would like to start.
You're determined.
Okay. Well, one of the things on our list, and I've also given a list to our good staff man, is our Planning Commission book, which we have not seen updated for some time. And perhaps this should be something for a new commissioner. I know that Mr. Anke's got his hands full at this. But I know Commissioner McBride does not have one, and there's miscellaneous updating. I don't think we have had this book updated, and it really needs to have some attention for probably several years. Has anybody got any further comments on that? And I noticed we also have a book. I don't know whether this was given to us all. I'm not so sure that you didn't come up with this, Mr. Chappell.
Yeah, I printed that off.
That was for the entire, covered this for the entire state as kind of guidelines.
Yes, a guideline for state planning.
Some things that help us maybe do our job a little bit. All right, I have got a copy here, both an old copy, I think. I think our staff gentleman put these together for us, Building Design Standards. And there's two sets here, and they're both identical. Would you know, Ms. Renee, why we had them this way? Building Design Standards and Ordinance, and they're identical.
You bet I know.
Okay. Why do we have two sets?
This, we have, we have two, I won't say formats, but one is set up in a friendly format, and the other is set up in the way it should go into the ordinance book. We have a rather large ordinance, ordinance book.
So basically, one is in, one is the ordinance, the other is the description to a citizen that was wanting to build or something.
Right. For example, when someone would come in and say, hey, I want to do this, then all Jim needs to do is hand the one that, that looks a little more friendly rather than the one that's more imposing. But this is, this is the legal format, and this is the, we're a really good town, and this is what you want to do format.
And I note that this one at the end actually is where originally it was signed by Mayor Chuck Pritchard at that time, dated the 17th of November, 2009. So we have had apparently no updates to speak of since.
For eight years.
Yes, so a little wonder that we're probably in need of a few amendments and additions to our.
This, this was something that, at that time, I think we had all looked at the need to, to put something together. And this is the result of many meetings that the Planning Commission put together and said, okay, this is what we want to do. We now have seven years of plan.
So we're ready, we're ready for number 12.
Right, which was the additional guideline shall be established. One thing I think we, we need to do, and I think the purpose of this meeting is to kind of get some ideas together in the hopes that as a new planning director comes on board, this could be something that we could say, this is kind of what we're thinking about. And that person could then come back and say, love what you're thinking about. These are my ideas as well as the new, you know, that, that person. And kind of put, put them all together.
And then they might tweet them and give them to us for final approval, and if we're okay, then on to the council.
Then on to the, on to city council. Not that we're saying, you know, this is what we want to ramrod through, but this is something for the new planning director to take as an outline.
Okay. I listed a few things that I, I thought maybe we should address, and I'm sure you guys can amplify on them and have any others. I started off with, with the ordinance of 3206, which is in this particular little packet that we just had. Our ordinance number 3206 back on, what, October, did we, or did you say November of 2009? Article 22 is Building Design Standards. The only thing I noted in there, why the, I have two identical sections, you just answered that. And then under Commercial Building, under 4-422, Appearance Standards. I guess I might add some questions in in helping our planning department when somebody comes to the window and asks them clarification on wings, coating heights, et cetera, the fact that 40% cannot be metal, or at least got to be metal covered. That's possibly one little area that could use a little attention. Maybe we can look at these later or individually, send them in and be ready for another meeting.
Sure.
I go to 4-423, our Residential Appearance Standards, and.
I don't have the formal version.
Here, why don't you take the one copy? It's right here, because they all read the same. And have you got one there?
Oh, I stole your, your copy here, sorry.
On item three, I noticed on our residential, well, these are just some that I thought maybe we could address a little bit, maybe tweak a little bit or whatever, get them ready. We've addressed the garage can't have two, has to have two vehicles. We run into the situation where only one was able to size it a lot or whatever. One thing I note that is not noticed in there is that you're not, but we're not, the recessed front plane or elevation of the garage. Now, we of course ran into that with one of our whole addendums out by the Job Corps. And if nothing else, maybe we note that that should be appealed to planning also, because if we, if we go from one, two garages, two vehicle garage to one, they say they need to appeal to planning. That is in there. Perhaps that front recess on, as you recall, that one, one whole addition out there had all of the garages were in front.
Yeah.
And I don't ever recall it coming to us to tell us why, architecturally speaking or whatever. I'm sure it was necessary.
I think that it, it did as a, as a variance. And Jim, can you help me here on that? I think that.
I know it's a, it's a major structural change.
Right.
You can move a garage, you can recess it a small amount, but after a while, you're messing with your ridge beam and your old framing system.
All I remember is that that happened, and I don't recall it. And I'm just suggesting possibly that too should at least have that note in there that it should be appealed to planning so that we can at least hear about it. All right.
And I know that we, we had a gentleman that was going to build a house on Drexel, and.
Is that a two car garage thing?
No, he, he wanted a one, he wanted a one car garage, and I, and we, we.
We okayed that.
We okayed it because of the size of the lot. And it, and the garage wasn't going to be recessed, but we asked him to recess it, and he said he would. Now, the house has never been built, that being said.
All I recall in that one was the fact that because the garages were a little forward, it cut down the length of the driveway, which made some longer vehicles actually encroaching into the sidewalk area. I remember seeing that. And again, I'm just suggesting maybe this is one thing that could be addressed. Next item, if you see this item, it's four on roofs. We say no shake or corrugated at that time. Since then, you see a lot of metal roofs. We do not address that in here.
But isn't corrugated different than a metal roof?
I know. And now we have, we're starting to see a lot of these nice metal roofs.
Yeah.
And they should probably at least be addressed, that particular item perhaps updated to include metal roofs, colors, acceptable brands, whatever. Item six I've got is one tree each, and of course, I remember that was quite important to you there, Ms. Renee. More of an enforcement problem as we brought up here a meeting or two ago, and I don't know. Is there such a thing as the fact that maintenance be addressed? That's pretty hard to do, I guess, what there is, Mr. Staff.
Right.
There is a minimum maintenance ordinance.
But again, we're just talking to addressing it. I'm dressing it. In other words, what if that tree dies?
Well, I think, oh, oh, you're talking about just the tree.
The tree.
If the tree dies, well, you know, then you can run into a situation where you've got a spot where a tree won't be up.
Yeah.
Just brought up for a little discussion. Item seven, fence, and we know that that's, that's been a bit of a, a little problem for all of us. Pretty clear in the item, no chain link, but it's happening. And possibly some suggestion, guys, we could talk about, I'd like to see all five of us if we do it, of course, but of allowing black vinyl chain link, maybe only in the rear yards, and maybe starting one or two feet behind the front elevation of the house. We run into situations now with a couple of brand new homes, and I have pictures here where a black vinyl coated chain link went in on Lake Shore Drive, two lots away from an older home that had chain link fence in the front of the house. I have the pictures. I, I would say it doesn't show up horribly, because at least it's the black chain link. That's also the house, unfortunately, where the, where the outbuilding got built in the front of the house, probably we think without permit. But that's something maybe we, we want to take up again. And in addition to the, to just the chain link fencing, I don't see where we, where we, where we address retaining walls. I actually saw Mr. Anke here last week. I was asked about retaining walls down on Manser and, and what, Division, wasn't it, I believe, Jim? And retaining walls that can be where they need to be so that when anybody comes into the city and, and asks about, can I put a retaining wall in to build up my front lawn? Maybe some clarification that will help them that you can now see sightlines where there's retaining wall, old walls, both, both block and, and rock down the road on Division, both ways, Division and Manser, off the right of way. And Jim brought up an interesting point to me. Again, we all, we always run into situations with corner houses, the ones on the corner.
Yes.
And he told me about a site, a site situation on that. So regardless, we know that permits at this point are not required for a fence, but I'm kind of thinking maybe we should address the fact that whether they have a cost or a fee, we at least ask them to have to come in to get a permit so that our planning department knows where some fencing's going in or a wall and can advise them properly. That's just, that's the item seven, that's what I think needs to be.
That is a perfect example of why you should get a permit.
A little picture.
It's like the yard of two homes in Perry.
That's a front. Oh, okay.
In Perry, not here.
Okay.
But that has happened four or five places in Perry, and there's nothing that they can do about it.
But that looks like, what, six foot?
It looks like a compound.
Yeah, but we don't allow a six foot fence in the front.
I know we don't, but it can, but it can happen. It would get.
Right.
Yeah. And actually, I don't think, in, in my drives around Guthrie, which are frequent, we have several, there are several homes that have privacy fences that run clear, not in front of the house, but between the house that come clear out, you know, to the sidewalk line, which blocks the view of the street from, for the house next door. I don't have any pictures of that, actually.
By the way, here's some pictures of that black chain link fence on Lake Shore Drive. And of course, here's a.
That doesn't look that bad. It really doesn't.
It really doesn't. Now, it's in front of the house, we know.
This is what I'm talking about. That kind of privacy fence.
Yeah. But that's between.
It's between, but it's the front, of the front profile of the house. And in Guthrie, that's not legal either. It can only come out to the front profile of the home.
Okay.
In other words, I couldn't build a privacy fence between my house and my neighbor and run it out to the street.
Yeah.
Is there not something we're supposed to be back, and maybe you could help us on this, Mr. Jim? Is supposed to be, a fence supposed to be back two feet from the front elevation? Or could it go to the, that fencing start to go into the back of the house, right at the front elevation, or was it supposed to be recessed somehow? I remember a foot or two back.
This is Guthrie.
Well.
This is going to be.
Your, your fence can start running beside property line.
That's all, Jim.
And it only, it can be only four foot tall until it passes the front building line, then it can go to set.
Front elevation.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with you, okay. This, by the way, is, is two lots away from that house with the black chain link fence. An older home with chain length that's been there for many years, and obviously, frankly, looking pretty decrepit. But the gentleman who just had recently popped at home, by the way, probably saw that fencing and figured, well, I guess I could put in chain link fence, but I'm going to put in vinyl coated, which certainly does have a little better look to it.
Well, and I think this is an example of, okay, we, we did this ordinance so many years ago, and we've tried to live with it, and there are some things that just need to be changed so that, you know, we get a, a certain amount of, of following, but not to, not put in extreme hardship, but still try to make it look decent. And maybe one way to get around it, like you said, is to have a, a minimal application fee for a fence permit.
Yeah. At least that would show the folks, but apparently then have a chance at the planning counter to be told what they can and, and really can't do ordinance wise. And, and not only that, but to give planning a chance there at the counter to say, oh, do you need to have it back here, or this is okay, or whatever.
Right.
Again, just a little clarification. The next item I have in that little list I made up is outbuildings, and my, my comment here is lots of revisiting and clarifications needed here. We all know this. You even saw a little bit again the other night on the city council as they, they looked at our situation, and we passed. Number one, it's a metal, non-metal clarification. I heard, heard quite a bit of, you know, pretty much non-metal, but we also know that there's, there's been some conversation about perhaps allowing it depending on lot size, whether the area might be defined as urban or country or in the city. So I, I think perhaps this is something we need to revisit big time, and possibly the size limit we've, we've had brought up to us, that anything under 200 feet, no problem. But then the point came up, what if somebody put three or four or five of those 200 footers in the backyard, less than 200 footers? And so I'm just making a note again that perhaps permits should be required regardless of size, so that somebody can be told, okay, fine, you can put a 200 square footer in there, but we'll, we'll give you a permit, fee or no fee, but you want to get one, or you want to get two, or whatever it is for clarification.
Or just say 200 foot cumulative.
Okay.
You know, that must have been there.
Again, just something that, like I said, it's been seven, eight, nine years, so. Also in that particular thing is included requirement that no permit for an outbuilding unless, oh, I think we need to have it in there, and I happened to see this in another city's deal, that there was a, there that no permit will be issued for an outbuilding unless there is a principal residential structure on site. We've had that due, but it isn't really noted in there firmly, and I happened to see it in another.
It is in the Guthrie ordinance. There is, there is a, and I'm, I'm trying to pull back, and again, this goes with memory, but you can't just use a law, you can't take a, an empty lot and just put a storage thing on it.
Well, perhaps that, again, one more addition to item 11, where it does outbuildings. No outbuilding is permitted on a site where there's not a permission.
Right.
Just a little bit more clarification to it.
Right.
So it gives our planning people a little better, a little better clarity at the window.
Right. And there are a number of things for the planning department that, you know, may be mentioned in, you know, the International Building Code, or the zoning code, or the design code, or the landscape code. But they are there already, and, you know, it may be difficult, you know, having to search through all of them for the layman.
But I'm suggesting just an overview if nothing else, so that that layman that comes to the, the window gets a little overview of what, don't even, that's not, don't think about, don't think about putting one on a lot that you just have there that's next to the.
It's not, no, because the purpose is residential. If you're in a residential zone, you have a residence. This is not, not commercial for storage.
But you know, again, with all due respect, the average person, I mean, I came out here understanding permits and things and ended up putting that little building in my own backyard. I was telling Jim, this, it was, had to be less than 200 square feet, just someplace I want to put my lawn mower. He runs into this every day. He says, somebody, it never occurred to me, and here I should know this, as a former contractor, didn't even think, Mike, do I need to get a permit with the city before I put this in? So, you know, I think we have to cut some slack. Any comments on that there, Mr. Anke, with our, our people that come to the window?
Yeah, yeah, generally speaking, the public would understand the difference between, you know, a garden shed that you put your weed trimmer in, your mower, and it's full, and something that maybe that's the size that you could put a vehicle in. That's, that's easy for the public to understand that difference, regardless of what the square footage is, you know.
But.
The 200 comes from building code. We're not required to have any permits or inspections for structures under 200 square feet. That's where that number came.
And I think you could do away with the, with the inspection part, but maybe again, just to make sure the public understands that you can't have five of these back here or whatever, so.
And, you know, Jim and I were talking at, at the last meeting afterwards, and he, he does already have a, a handout that's just given to people when they come to apply for a building permit that says, okay, when you're ready to submit your, your plans, these are the things that have to be submitted, you know, so check off all of this. So it's, it's not a situation for him where, I'm not going wood here, where it should be any surprise for somebody wanting to, you know, apply to build something or apply to, to do a remodel. If we were to do something that, you know, may be attached to that, or, you know, if it were a remodel and you want to add a fence or do a, a small storage thing, you know, this is what needs to be done. And I don't know if we provide a simple check off, yes, I've received this, it goes into a file, or, or something when a person wants to put up a fence.
Certainly we don't, you know, we certainly don't need to increase the paperwork for you during that one. Do you, the little handout you have there, as things have changed, suddenly these little pop-up structures, people protecting their car from hail. That has, that's only been something really new and, and quite here in the last three or four years. Maybe that little sheet that you have also appreciated that, that you look it over and see if there's some things there that might need a little bit of your addressing to help you guys out at the window. I don't know. Okay. I could do anything. The other thing on the, on the, that I had on the, on the resident, rather, the outbuildings was obviously a corner lot situation. We've run into this a couple, three times. Suddenly, we, we have two sides that are, are visible situation for an applicant, and maybe we could address that a little bit better, the additional limits or conditions that might affect them. And I don't know if you had any other ideas on those.
I think if, maybe if it were explained to a person on a corner lot, I have a corner lot, they don't have a side yard. If you live on a corner, you have two front yards.
That's correct.
And if people, you know, looked at it that way, that, okay, you have two front yards, and you have to comply with front yard requirements on two sides instead of a side yard.
Yeah, which I got surprised again about the site clearance, as Mr. Anke told me here the other day. I've tried to tell somebody, 25 by 25, I believe, off the.
25 by.
You have to have, even if you're retaining walls, you have to have new walls in there for site distance per, per car on a corner lot. I would imagine that nine out of 10 people have no clue about that. I didn't. So just a few things that would really help, I think, our planning department clarify things and hopefully bring people into, into compliance with these ordinances. The only other thing I had, and I took a few pictures, was one of the things that we were starting to discuss for these storage containers. I'm not sure where they fit in the ordinances, we don't have them anywhere in there at this time. I took a couple of pictures. Here's one down on, off of Lake Road, two of them, and a little, a little lid put over the top. At least US shipping has been taken off the side and painted.
That's the best, that's the best looking cargo container facility I've seen.
It doesn't, it doesn't really look bad, does it?
In our neighborhood.
It's in the backyard. Now, here's a couple that are on Division, somewhere near the, near our, I'm not sure what that is down there. I see a couple of tents, too. Is that a temporary thing? You know anything about that? Right on Division?
It's sort of across from the, I, I noticed it the other day, there's some tents, and now, no, when I was there, there was a, there was a couple of, you know, like the back of the semis.
They were there.
In addition to the.
They were there.
And it looks like they're selling stuff.
You know, it is. You're right.
Yeah, like they're having a sale or something.
Almost like a yard sale or flea market or something.
Yeah, that looks like one of those social tents where you have a party, a party tent.
Now, I have seen these tents on job sites for construction crews to come in and get out of the sun.
But you know, honestly, it looks like, it looks like they're selling antiques or something. I, I didn't check it out.
I haven't.
But it just, it was, it wasn't like there was work, it was like they were, like a sale or something.
It did.
But it wasn't close enough to the street to draw people in either, so I don't know what was going on. I, I was, I'd gone to the vet.
Well, and talking about these kinds of, of shipping containers, what do, what do we do now? Does that fall under the?
Well, I think a shipping container, are you talking like a pod?
No, these are.
Oh, you're true, that would be.
Yeah.
That was down on, actually, it's right across the street from that 45 foot square foot or two.
Yeah, those are old pods.
Okay.
And you can, you know, there's a difference probably from renting one and putting it in your driveway so you can get your house remodeled.
No problem.
Then to permanently place one for.
And there's a lot of permanently placed ones, and more coming up.
Permanently placed pods would not be acceptable, but.
That's been there.
We, we don't really have that in our ordinances.
No, I'm saying you could put that in there. Because if you're going to remodel your house or paint your house, you might want to.
See, like this one went in behind home when, when they started to remodel.
But that's a commercial application as opposed to a residential.
And it never left.
It never left, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I see where that is, but I don't know what that is. I mean, it's a, it's a storage unit.
That's a, of the, I recognize the company, Mobile Mini.
Probably.
Where, where might you suggest that in the ordinance, or have you got any thoughts on it?
Time frame.
Huh?
Time frame.
In other words, you got 30 days, 60 days?
Yeah. 90 days.
Whether the bunch have them.
But that would be a pod situation, where people are moving or something.
In fact, I've got a.
This one's more for permit.
Oh, I, I, that's, that's there permanently, and it's now a little structure on the top.
And you know, another thing I noticed about that particular.
Well, they made a cardboard out of it.
Yes, they did.
They put a roof between two pods and made a cardboard. It's pretty ingenious.
Yeah.
Actually, I vote, I vote yes on this. That's not a bad way to go.
I want to, I want to see that if you're by your home.
I kind of want to, I'd say no.
Well, I mean, you know, you're talking about.
Okay.
But those are things we need to, you know, we're not going to come to a conclusion right now, but I think this is something we need to take up with the new, the new person.
But I'm, but I'm not sure where that should be in our ordinance, but I really think it needs to be addressed.
That's a point of reference. A lot of them.
Oh, my gosh.
Still have signage on the side of them, and they're permanently placed.
That's tacky as fuck.
And there's more, look, there's more of them coming.
Jim, a lot of them have. They still have uniglory on the side of them.
They just come off for shit and stuff.
Yeah.
They're not painted, they haven't even tried to hide the fact. But that is becoming.
They're making homes out of them now. We've actually, our.
That's increasingly becoming.
I know.
It's increasingly becoming an issue.
I just think it's one more thing that we, we should address.
We have, we have one just moved into my neighborhood back.
Now, one other thing in, that we've talked about, we used to in the past, and I, I've always been a believer in buying or borrowing ideas from other groups, agencies, what are the right specifications? Maybe we could find out what some of sister cities close to us are relatively narrow size. As I recall, we did that for the digital signs several years ago.
Right.
How, how do we implement that? Is that, you know, Mr. Hank, he doesn't need any more throwing on his shoulders, but.
No, that's, that's what happens to the.
I also think it depends on your sister city, and I don't want to insult any cities.
No, but I'm saying.
But that being said, you know, once again, and this is not, just for anybody who's listening at home, because you know I'm such a firm believer in.
Well, for it.
In our comprehensive plan, and, you know, it talks about Guthrie, and this was done by professional city planners, and it talks about, you know, that we were the capital of the state of Oklahoma, and resulting in superb architecture that remains one of our greatest assets, and it also talks about our potential for growth. And it talks about the suburban nation of North Oklahoma City and Edmond, and that Guthrie is particularly attractive to people tied to the metropolitan area but seeking a distinctive living environment. And just to move forward, it says that with this growth possibility, that it is important that Guthrie maintains its distinctive community character in the face of this growth potential by manning the location and the character of new development. And I know that people that are watching might be thinking, you know, let people do what they want to do, but Guthrie is special, and we're trying to keep it that way, and we're trying to follow the template. But it talks about the health of our architecturally distinctive and historically important city and our neighborhoods, and that any future development, future development, we need to be very careful about the character of new development, and that, I think that's where we run into problems with, you know, coming up with ordinances that are telling people what to do with their property, and that's difficult for anyone to hear. We're all for, we're all for code enforcement. It just depends on where we draw the line, you know?
What I was saying, talking with some of the other cities comparable to our size is more about what are they doing about these cargo containers or pods? What are they doing about glaring digital signs that we ran into a little bit, we still can, what are they doing about popping up suddenly all these little, these little pop-ups protect your cars that are up in four hours, and yet people want to protect their cars, and yet suddenly they're, they're prolifically in the neighborhood, and I'm just curious how they're handling.
I'm afraid what you'll find is they aren't doing anything about it.
Well, who knows? If we don't check, we won't know.
Well, I mean, I drive around.
Yeah, yeah.
I go to a lot of little towns. I mean, you can go to, you can go to Cushing, for example. Now, you draw, you drive through neighborhoods in Cushing, and about every second block you'll see a trailer out in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that's the situation, but I'm just saying it, it doesn't hurt to borrow ideas maybe because it costs some.
I agree.
What, now, those are some things I had, folks, what did you bring some things for us to kick around in the table top here?
I don't think these guys do this.
I do. I have, I have some concerns about signage, and I, this is, I don't know that, I know that a couple of signs have come to our attention, you know, like they wanted to put a big digital sign out there on Waterloo. Huge digital sign, and that didn't happen, but it has been brought to my attention. And I don't even know if this is in the city limits, but there is a, there's a semi-trailer just east of Guthrie. I mean, I didn't, I haven't looked at the.
Is that a lot of?
Yes, and, and it's, it's a sign now. It's essentially, they moved a sign and it says I35equipment.com, and it's just a trailer sitting right next to the highway.
But, I'm assuming that's out of city limits.
Doesn't the city go all the way, does, does the city not go all the way to I35?
Just to I35 with the exception of Valero and the Loves.
Okay, but then all the way down to the first, the next exit?
No.
No?
Just on the west side.
That's what I'm talking about. Just on the, so, but, but from the first Guthrie exit to the second Guthrie exit, is everything on the west side of Interstate 35 in the city limits?
From the first exit to the second?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, then this is a, this is a brand new.
I think it, well, it's, yeah.
This, I thought it was.
To the freeway, yeah.
And it actually goes all the way down to, what, Seward Road?
Does it go Seward?
Yes.
Yeah, Seward Road.
And actually a little bit south of Seward, because that's really one sign they want to.
So essentially, what we have is a brand new billboard that is an old semi-trailer that's directing people down the road to a used equipment sales place.
Which is on the east side of I35, just north of Waterloo.
Yes.
I've seen that, and I.
Isn't it just, oh, okay, it's on the north side of Waterloo, but it's south of Seward, so that's not, that's not the city limit.
Look, that's off-premise advertising.
Well, what we're saying is.
Which is not allowed.
Somebody pulled it in there.
But even then, if they were going to put up a new billboard and say, I mean, it's not a billboard, it's a.
Big old forty-foot, forty-foot trailer.
Yes.
It's still advertising, that's why I look at it.
It shouldn't be there, and it just, you know.
Well, again, how do we pursue that? Is that, obviously, it's code enforcement, gotta contact the property owner, perhaps the property owner said, somebody came and said, hey, you mind if I pull a billboard, a truck up here with signage? It's just more enforcement situation.
There's another one of those things that's not in, not in the Guthrie city limits, but that has been used for elections. I don't know if you remember seeing.
Oh, yes.
Reelect the sheriff, or won't say who.
That was south of.
But, you know, it was painted and set there on the side of the interstate, and now it just says like re-e-bee, you can't read it, but it's just a, it's a little dump site now.
What's your thoughts on that there, Mr. Hanky?
Well, I think when, you've got some, some great ideas here.
You know, when I'm saying, just this particular incident where that truck is sitting there, they pulled it in.
Yeah, I think you've got some great ideas here, and, and what you're speaking of now, and I think when the new city planner comes on board, that one of the things that you may want to inquire about or ask is if code enforcement can be a stronger presence with the planning commission at the meetings. You know, it's, it's hard, if they're not involved, they don't have any skin in the game, it's gonna, it's harder for them to go out, you know, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of complaints, we just react to them because we don't have a huge enforcement department.
Right, and I know that, I know that code enforcement is way more reactive than proactive.
Yeah, so, you know, what I'm saying is maybe if, if they would have a presence with your meeting, that they could, you know, have a better idea of what, what's important to you.
Well, just on that, on that same note, then there's that, I've noticed for a long time, I just kept waiting for it to be towed off, but there's a, there's like a construction trailer right there at the Guthrie, the first Guthrie exit. You know, we've got that new exit, you know, so you can exit from the south, really the only thing that's been added to that exit is, is this.
I don't.
Yeah, it's, it's just right there, and I know that.
First Guthrie exit, south, south Guthrie exit?
Yeah, just nor, just, just straight east of.
Is it where that, where the big pond used to be up there? That big, that's a fireworks place?
If you start, if you're heading south and you pull off on the second Guthrie exit, just as you start to exit, there's a trailer setting right there next to the fence.
Are you talking down there by, by Vance?
Yes, down Vance. If you're exiting south, well, see, here's his sign, and the exit is right here.
Okay.
That is, that's been sitting there for four or five minutes, I guess.
Okay, well, I'm feeling real unobservant.
Well, it's there.
Again, enforcement issues, and of course, that's, you know, I know you get hampered with them at times, even though it's not your, not your responsibility. Got any, any advice, input for us on what we can maybe do? And I'm even looking at, again, our ordinances, we look under penalty. And, you know, we don't like that word penalty, and people don't, I like to think people aren't doing a lot of the stuff on purpose, but there needs to be some sort of consequences so that if they do something beyond the ordinance, somehow, there has to be some consequences or there will people continue to do it. Any input on that, or have you ever heard that many of your conferences or anything you go to?
The process is in place. If, if anyone is in violation of a city ordinance, we advise them that they are in violation of an ordinance and give them a certain timeframe to, to become compliant. And then after, after that time period, that window closes, if they have not, we give them another notice saying, perhaps you forgot, here's another window, please use it. And if, ultimately, if they don't, then they could be subject to a citation and have to go to court, and those citations could be issued on a daily basis until the issue is resolved.
Are you able to stop, say, construction on something that, that they started? I think you mentioned that somebody was trying to do a metal building here not too long ago. Are you, are you usually, as, as an inspector representing the city, are you able to stop construction? Or do you have, do you have the, the power or strength where you say, if you don't stop, I can have law enforcement come out here?
All, all of those are in the building code, and I have done that, and the one that you're talking about as well.
Okay.
My, my biggest concern going through all the things was the enforcement. I think we've got some, some decent ordinances. We have a lot that need to be tweaked, but I, I don't feel that as many ordinances as we have, they're of no value unless, unless it's enforced.
Yeah.
And we are getting to be a city of enough size that, you know, in addition to the nuisance ordinances that we have, you know, whether it be trash or tall grass, because I know in the summer times, the code enforcer spends most of his time on those kinds of things. Maybe we need, you know, I hate to say, you know, what we have to do is hire somebody else, but maybe there needs to be a person who specializes in the ordinances of zoning or the ordinances of, of design guidelines and that kind of thing.
And, you know, I know that, and I don't know if that the, you know, the, the ordinances are set or the, the time to, you know, you know, move something. You know, one of the things that I'm seeing happen because of my neighborhood association, we have several, we've had several issues that have been addressed by the city, but a lot of times what you will find will happen is that the problem is addressed, and then a month later, it's back. And you, and people end up, you know, people don't want to call people on their neighbors. They just don't want to do it.
Hate to do that.
They hate to do it, even though it's negatively impacting, you know, the value of their home or. I know in Oklahoma City, I think that, you know, they about mow your lawn, does the city do that and then charge the resident?
Yes.
Do they? Okay, and do they charge the residents, do they charge just what it costs to get it done, or is it a little more substantial?
There's usually an admin fee that's tacked on, but it's not big.
It's usually just whatever the contractor charges, the only additional monies that might be paid is in, if a citation was issued.
And, you know, I mean, I don't see.
Oklahoma City does that.
And I imagine.
I don't know.
I imagine code enforcement deals more, and certainly knows more about high grass problems than I do, because I, I just don't see that very often. I know empty lots maybe is a bigger problem than residential. I don't see it very often.
I would like to see us use this to, to get information out to maybe help what, what our planning department expects when somebody comes into the window. I, I mean, it doesn't have to be super detailed, just maybe a little overview, make sure you check with them, right there, I see she's clicking her ticket here, came in this time. But this goes out, what, monthly?
Yes, in the water bill.
And I don't know, of course, that's just one more thing you need, you need to have a monthly, a monthly article for this, you know, every two months or something. But I think people need to be informed, and I think if they were informed, more would, more would hopefully comply.
And, you know, I saw this, this is in a zoning ordinance from the city of Texas, and I think this just explained it perfectly. It talks about neighboring land uses. Okay, so the neighbors, neighboring land uses should maintain and enhance the enjoyment and value of both properties.
Yeah, I like that wording.
Yeah, so, so, so neighborhood land uses should maintain and enhance the enjoyment and value of both properties. And too often, what's happening, you know, and I know you've seen that house on the lake where a metal building went up, and I don't know if it was bootlegged, but, you know, two really nice homes, and, and the metal building looks like it belongs to the neighbor's house. It's much closer to the neighbor's home than it is to even his own. That, that standard was not followed, and that's the, that's the, that's what I would like to see be the Guthrie standard, that, that land uses should maintain and enhance the enjoyment of both properties, in a nutshell, I guess.
Okay, how do we implement this now? How do we make this happen now?
Well, we probably.
Mr. Hanky, you got any thoughts?
Yeah.
How do we open here?
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to wait till someone on board, which will be soon, for as in the spot of the city planner's office. And then, you know, make your recommendations. I think this is really good to bring to the, to the new city planner, and maybe the thought that code enforcement could get more active with the group as well, and that's, that's an excellent starting point. I mean, this isn't something that I think we're going to formalize in a letter and hand to somebody and put.
No, 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 no.
You know, this is a long work project here, and it needs much further study. So I think what you've got to do is start one here.
But I think sort of what Renee was talking about, you can have ordinances. And, you know, I can remember, was it five or six years ago when Matt was here? And, you know, there was, Matt had decided that our ordinances had written, said that there was, that Guthrie had no legal way to keep people from parking in their yards. So we went through that whole, they did surveys and polls and, and.
Hearings.
Yes, and hearings, and, and it was long fought, and both sides expressed their concerns, but when all was said and done, we have a no parking on the grass ordinance. Now, you wouldn't know that to drive around, but we have one. And so, but, but a law, a law without enforcement isn't anything at all. It's just, it's not even worth the paper it's written on. And I do, and, and I'm not saying that there have, I do know, you know, that there were, particularly after, you know, that came in ordinance, there was a lot of cars that stopped parking on the yard.
It helped.
Yes, so it definitely helped.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, but then it was sort of back, and, and I think what you find, because, you know, I, I probably, I don't get as many calls as Jim does, but for some reason, people just feel like they're going to call me, you know, I get a picture on my phone, does this bother you? Well, that bothers, you know, so.
But the reason it got back is there was no enforcement follow-up probably, apparently. By the way, I didn't mean to bypass you. We let Mr. Travel ahead a few things. Have you got some things you'd like to also discuss on our little roundtable here?
There, this is, this is further down, down the line, but at some point, the planning commission is going to have to look at redoing the zoning ordinance. I think a lot of what we have is, is very old, you know, we addressed within this geographic area, you're going to have all residential. Well, as, as you had already indicated, we are unique, and sometimes, if we take a look at the buildings downtown, we have a certain kind of building that is, you know, a one of a kind, that doesn't necessarily mean all of it's going to be commercial, you know, maybe because if you have a certain kind of building, you can have different kinds of uses in it, you know, more mixed use type thing. And so, I think as we phase in getting some of these design issues taken care of, maintaining the area, code enforcing a lot of what we have, phase two of our commission is going to have to be look at updating the zoning code, look at updating the comprehensive plan, you know?
How often?
For you, that you don't want to speak up?
How, how often is the comprehensive plan, how long is it?
Maybe twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, and what are we at now? Two thousand two, we're fifteen years, so, you know, we've got, and, and honestly, this, and I've read the whole thing.
Well, I know.
I mean, if you, if you go through it, it's still pushing in a, us in a direction that we haven't fully embraced. So, I mean, there's, there's plenty, I think there's still a lot of value in it. I mean, if there's tweaks that been, need to be made to it, I don't know what they would be, but, you know, that's not, I just.
Well, and then maybe what we can do is make, try to make everyone, and that's not going to happen, as aware of this as, as we all are, and maybe that goes back to your, your newsletter. The library does a wonderful job of promoting itself in the newsletter, you know, these things are happening, this is going on in your library, and so on. Planning department could throw in a, a paragraph that says, okay, in your comprehensive plan, did you know that? Da-da-da, you know, make it more aware, and, I know, that's one more thing on your plan.
I just.
I hope you, I could, I could fill Jim up.
Well, one, you know, I just, you know, I hate to be redundant, but updating the comprehensive plan, updating the zoning code, you know, those are all functions that our new city planner is going to be able to do, because the, the new city planners. Because the, the new city planner is not gonna be doing construction inspections. He's not gonna be doing code enforcement. He's not gonna be doing flood plan administration. He's not gonna be the fire marshal. He's gonna have time to do these things.
Well, and I think, I think.
Agreed totally.
I think, I guess what we hope for from this meeting, and you guys can correct me if they're wrong, is just to have a rough outline of things to present to that gentleman, whoever he has.
A good start with her or her.
Yeah, or she, yeah.
Or she, yeah.
And then I've only got one other thing that I've been starting to hear complaints about is RVs parked in driveways around town. You know, forty foot RVs that are just.
There's a limit.
They're just, but I don't think there, I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that.
Well, in the zoning ordinance, twenty-four, twenty-two on page sixty-five.
Ooh, I like, I like that.
It specifically calls out where you can park commercial and recreational vehicles on your property. It's there, but in defense of our, you know, code enforcement, you know, the code enforcement right now is an army of one.
Yeah.
And a community of ten thousand people. And it's really hard to keep up, you know. Now, that's maybe not be justification, but that's the rationale that.
Well, and I honestly, you know, I honestly don't know if the people that have complained to me, because generally, when people complain to me, I tell them to call the police department and ask for the code enforcer. I don't know that they've complained about it. I just know that it's. And, and, and what I'm, but what I've, since it's been brought to my attention, because I don't, I don't have an RV parked in my street, it's been brought to my attention that there's more and more of that happening and people are talking about, it's like they moved a trailer in next door in their front yard and I can't even see down the street anymore.
And it's, you know, it's a learning process.
It's not fair to the university.
That's a mission.
Joe, it's a learning process and it's a communication process. If, you know, one of the avenues of communication, we just decided would be to put in a little something, a blurb in the water bill. But a lot of people, compliant or non-compliant, if you're like me, I dig through the envelope and I find the bill and I throw the rest away.
And most people.
You know, so that, but a lot of people do read what's in there. So it would reach a certain group.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, be answered everything.
Yeah, it's one, one meeting.
And you know, there might, I mean, and when you start discussing things like that, it's like, how do you get people to see that part of the page? You know, is it, is it, do you put a big FYI for your information and just put a short little message in there? Like, do you know that you shouldn't mow your yard, that you shouldn't mow your glass grippings into the gutter?
No, you don't do that.
Which is something that our, my, our neighborhood association does. Every, every time we have a newsletter, there's FYI. Do you know that it's illegal to park except when delivering or unliving cars in the yard? So, neighbor, our neighborhood association is educating people of neighborhood.
Yeah, well, and that goes back to, you know, neighborhood solutions and, and setting up more neighborhood associations with the people in those neighborhoods.
So that they can help spread, they have to help spread the word.
So, I mean, if we had that plus the newsletter and, and maybe we'll need to come up with a few more.
Maybe a spot on the, on the cable channel. A lot of people don't watch the cable channel, but a lot of.
Or honestly, just like, you know, when Dr. Simpson does a little article in the Guthrie paper. You know, if we have a new planning director, the planning director might, you know, once every month or every two months have a, and I know not everybody gets this paper anymore.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe we could get on the Guthrie news page with Chris Evans, you know, an interview with the director, the, you know. Those kinda, I mean.
Commissioner Chappell, enter your article five, we do this, it's in here, section five. No more than one recreational vehicle or hauling trailer per family on the premises shall be permitted. Can't exceed thirty-two feet long or eight feet wide. And further provided that said recreational vehicle or trailer shall not be parked or stored for more than forty-eight hours unless it is located behind the front yard building line.
There it is.
And there's also something situation, same situation.
I didn't know.
We encountered this where you don't have a commercial vehicle that can see one and a half tons.
And actually, the two people that called me complaining about this, I told them, I didn't think that it was against the ordinance.
Well, and then further.
Was that page sixty-five?
Yeah, it is page sixty-five. And further, also, that we've also seen this with a lot of cars parked, no more than six cars. No more than six. We see many others with more than that. So it's in the ordinances again, it's a, it's a compliance situation and, again, like you said, you got a one man show trying to do it all.
I just feel like we've got a good outline of things to present to the lucky.
You do.
Man or woman who gets possession.
Yeah, it's a matter of making it easy to use. A lot of these things we complain and gripe about, they're in here.
Gotta find them. You gotta find them, you gotta enforce.
Yeah. And, and whether the new person can make it easier to use the ordinance. We gotta educate people about it. And we may need another code enforcer.
I think, I think that that's a, a goal that we need to try to achieve.
Yeah.
I think it certainly makes life easier for you guys and in the planning department too. Because I'm sure you get a lot of calls and somebody wanna do something in. Anything else on the, so going from here, what can we, how can we kind of, I guess, I don't wanna throw it all on you there, staff member Hanky, but what do we need to do, would you suggest, so that we can have things ready for this new planning director that's coming?
Well, you know, our, our commission is built on the dynamic of five. So I think this is a good start.
Well, there are some additions to that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe our other members will also have, be able to amplify or edit this as needed. So, here's the bone, here's the bones, put on the meat, remember that?
Yeah, we used to say that a lot.
So possibly in our next meeting, I'll even, probably have a chance to talk to the other two and I get them a copy of this and see if they can amplify. And maybe you two would be kind enough to add anything to that little start if I could, ask you that.
I'll, I'll email you something that is what I.
And then we can bring it in and maybe at least a, a little bit of discussion at our next meeting. Doesn't have to be a workshop situation, but we can kick it around, is that allowable?
Yeah, just like this.
Okay.
New business.
So under request for future items of discussion, we'll kind of add this to our, our next meeting?
Yeah, new, new business, that's a good idea.
And now that we've raised you a, your whole evening here, Mr. Hanky, what staff comments might have you for us?
I, I really have none. I just wanted to, you know, say again that the code enforcement folks do, do a great job considering, you know, the volume of things that they have to look at. And a lot of time, a lot, most times, it doesn't come to resolution immediately because we like to work with the citizens and give them the opportunity to become compliant. And that's, and that just creates a backlog. Our back burner is getting fuller and fuller while we look at new things. So I just wanted to compliment the code enforcement office on, on the job they do. And it would always help to have more of them, that's for sure.
Commissioner Chappell?
The only thing I want to mention is that I went to the placemaking conference at the University of Oklahoma, which would be a really great thing since I know about it too, to get as many commissioners and as many, you know, like our new director. It was so inspiring and it talked about city planning. And, you know, good planning leads to good cities and bad planning leads to really bad ones. And Guthrie was born with a really high bar. And, but some of the sessions were about making great streets and, you know, building great communities, having thriving downtown, making places. And placemaking, a lot of people, and I'm sure Renee has heard about it, but this placemaking is happening everywhere and they're not talking about, a lot of times, cities build things that don't draw people there. And it's about creating spaces where people want to go. And anyway, I would just encourage anyone that, and I think Guthrie has a lot of potential for that because we've got a lot of, you know, we've got some empty space downtown that could really be someday, you know. But anyway, I would, I'll know about this next year and I'll encourage everyone to go. But planning, planning people from all over the world were there. People for, a, a, a mayor from a city in Indiana that, when he became mayor, the city's population was ten thousand. And he talked about signage and how important it is. And then if signage isn't controlled, signage can become litter, where it just takes away. And, and so you've always gotta be careful about, and we have some good ordinances that a lot of cities don't have. Like that you can't, you know, it has to be an onsite sign now. We have a lot of signs that aren't onsite, but at least we shouldn't have anymore. So, 'cause you can, you know, we don't wanna look like Times Square.
I think we've, we've covered everything and if we can put all of that in, in one document, it'll help the next person's job a lot.
I'd just like to clarify one thing that I saw and of course, our refined city council took up our, our approval of last month. And there was a lot of good comments and growing con. The word hypocrisy was used several times and I took a little offense to that because I, I know our group does not, we don't, we don't do any things out of fairness to one person, not to somebody else. And I'd just like to make sure that that's clarified on the situation. Sometimes it's necessary and I compliment our staff gentleman, Mr. Hanky, that explained that these conditional use permits or special use permits are just that, one at a time. And we try, and I know this group, we have, we try to, to think about the applicant and what's best for the city. And I, I, I thought we did a very fine job, a difficult job, even as the, the gentleman mentioned, it was difficult for the planning commission. But we did what would work, given what we had, what was already there. And I don't think that, that didn't open the door in my mind to a metal shed by every other metal building in town, which is kind of, nor the fact that, that there was any hypocrisy. And I would like anybody knowing that, know, I think our planning commission will, will, as we say and Mr. Hanky said, we will, we will look at each one individually and be fair to the city and be fair to the applicant.
Now, that raises a question for me and I hope, hopefully, it's my last one. But when some, when a metal building is requested, shouldn't it, should that be a special use permit? I mean, if it's not, if it's not permitted by code, why is it coming to planning commission? Shouldn't it be denied at the desk?
Unless you have a special situation. I think, I think you have to, you have to give, you have to give the applicant a means of appeal.
Certainly.
I see.
You know, so, and I think Renee had that in there.
Okay.
You know, that.
And, and I've got no problem with that, but I just didn't underst, I didn't, they're not applying for a special use permit. And I thought maybe that's what they should be doing since they're asking for something that by definition is not allowed by code.
That would be a variance, a special use would be, would be.
Okay, okay, so they're asking for a variance.
Yeah. And I think that's one of the things also to get onto here is to address the issue of what would be correct for board adjustment, what would be a correct item for planning commission.
You know, and again, they, they have those options. They have the, the planning commission and the city council and then they have the board of adjustment. But I feel that those, I feel that those avenues still need to be open to somebody who might have a special situation, which I feel that was there a month or so ago. And I think we have to be fair to all applicants that way and yet fair to our city. Anyway, again, compliments to you for a nice job that evening there.
Thank you.
And that is all we have and if I'll have a moment, a motion to adjourn?
I may motion.
I second you.
So may, we adjourned.